Call order, our special city council workshop of December 19th. Following the distribution of cookies by the city manager.
Give me a cookie.
Well, Jim, you're too late.
I walked in right as you hit your hand.
Second item is the discussion of alternative concepts for the downtown street scape project. Staff, do you want to take it from there and tell us what the options are?
We have Brad Moten on the phone. Brad, you there?
Yep, I'm here.
All right, Brad.
Brad is the architect that said he retained on this project. On this screen over here, he has a PowerPoint presentation that he's going to walk us through. And then, once he gets through them, we will open it up for discussion.
Where are you at, Brad and Dallas?
Yep, I'm here and Dallas.
The show's yours, Brad.
All right, it's all yours.
I appreciate it. Now, I've come to you through the great technology that Eric was so kind to help set up and be able to allow us to do this meeting virtually. Please let me know if it's hard to hear or if anything goes wrong, but I think we should, we got all the teams worked out this week, so. You should be able to see the slideshow that I'm going to flip through and just give you a brief overview of what the design was and through some discussions with ODOT and city manager and staff. We've been working on, you know, kind of reviving this project to get it moving in terms of review through ODOT and SHPO in terms of the environmental review that needs to happen to award the grant. So I'm going to go through a brief, brief introduction, and then we'll go from there. So the project, as most of you know, and just to catch a little bit of y'all's speed, is the streetscape project from essentially the alley north of Oklahoma to the alley south of Harrison, looking into, you know, increasing pedestrian activity along the side of Division Street by replacing the sidewalks and areas adjacent to the, to the parallel parking along Division. So when the original project was proposed, we had the bumpout areas that are essentially called curb extensions or bumpouts that essentially define the area where a pedestrian can travel and where vehicular traffic can travel. So the other item in the middle is that dedicated left turn lane, which we will talk about in a little bit in terms of traffic legalization. So going through, just looking at some of the examples of how that, that design has been originally proposed, then south on Harrison, how that intersection was originally designed. One of the items in the project was some improvements in the alley between first and Division. Through some discussions with staff and learning about the new project and ideas around the football stadium, Harrison Park Plaza, we have been talking about to ODOT in this grant-funded project of swapping that alley, essentially the other side connected to that future project. So that'll be another item to discuss at some point. But really, what we want to talk about is how we want to move forward on these, on the bumpouts and on the intersection. So I'm going to go through just a couple of these items and then get to the two alternatives that we're going to talk about. So these are the basic items that are within this project. On-street parking, this is showing how, you know, it's retaining essentially the same parallel parking that belonged to Division today, where the bumpouts then just define where that is and curve back around into the existing street. Travel lanes, very little work would be done on the travel lanes in this project. There has been some discussion with ODOT of a potential mill and overlay at the same time of this project, just so that everything is fresh and new. So that is something that we're working on with ODOT in terms of scheduling for that. But the travel lanes are very important. Obviously, what we're talking about with the bumpouts reduces the amount of crossing distance that a pedestrian has from, you know, pedestrian realm to pedestrian realm across these travel lanes. Moving forward into landscape, we've been talking with, you know, city maintenance staff and, and ODOT about the amount of landscape proposed on this project. We're, we're working on a minimal amount in terms of, you know, maintenance and scheduling of crews that are going to have to maintain landscape on this streetscape. But it is an essential portion of a streetscape design to, one, soften up that, that, you know, vehicular realm of papers and, and concrete and cars. So it is something we like to include as a stop element that kind of softens these corners. So, but we are taking into account some of the, you know, reduction of that so that, so it doesn't increase lots of maintenance, using some drop collar and specific plant types. And then we go to the fourth element, which is the pedestrian sidewalks and bumpouts, which is really the key to this project. This is why the grant was even initiated, is alternative transportation modes, alternatives to vehiculiers, and it's really the pedestrian realm that this project is focused on. So the complete replacement of sidewalks, the addition of, of the bumpouts were decided. And, and really, that is kind of the key to this project, is creating that pedestrian element along the street that makes it easier to travel north and south and east and west through downtown. So going through just a few basic rigoring, you all, most of you have seen me before, and then we'll get to the two alternatives. These were some of the, the options of showing some of the existing conditions and then how the design applied those existing conditions would look. Looking north at the corner of Harrison and Division and really showing how, you know, the, the, the design would be applied here. So moving forward, talking to ODOT and, you know, a few others involved in the project, we have been discussing the alternative in terms of the bumpouts. We understand there's some concern about, you know, one, vehicular travel and vehicular turning and, and items involved in the bumpout. You know, one of the items that ODOT has mentioned is that that's kind of the goal here, is to slow down traffic, you know, to one, direct traffic in the specific areas. But we'd like to come up with some alternatives. One for the state historic preservation office to evaluate, as well as local stakeholders to evaluate, and as well as the council to look at. And so here we have option A, which is essentially the option that you saw before, the past several years, the past presentation that I gave you. And talking to a few others and even to ODOT, we have come up with option B, which is essentially a reduced bumpout option. And if you look at this example on the left, this is a blow up of, of the one on the right. And if we retain the bumpouts on the north-south, on the, well, essentially the pedestrian bumpouts that go east-west, so the bumpouts that would define the parallel parking on Division, but then quickly turn back and tie into the existing curb line of the sidewalk along Oklahoma and, this would be replicated at Harrison and Oklahoma. So this is an alternative that we've come up with to start discussing with council, with staff, with, with ODOT, as we propose to, to turn in our design into ODOT for review as it's going to be moved forward into an environmental review, which is done on every federally funded project, and that is done by the state historic preservation office, as well as any others involved at the state level. But what we need to do moving forward is essentially present them with these two options. And we wanted to present this to you to show you a solution that we've come up with, potentially retaining those, you know, east-west viewsheds as you look down Oklahoma or Harrison and not creating that bumpout that pushes out into the street. It would essentially retain the existing, you know, painted striping, which could be restripped and redone as the project is done. You would still see cars, you would still see, you know, what is there today, but then the north-south visual effect would be the bumpouts moving forward. So really, those are the options that I wanted to discuss and kind of open up for discussion. I know Bill is in the room, Leroy can help kind of facilitate the discussion in the room, but I'm here to answer any questions revolving around this, this new proposal and kind of how we want to move forward with submitting some drawings to ODOT to then go through this environmental process moving forward and really get their comments and get the state historic preservation office to make some comments as well. So I'm here to answer any questions and let me know what you think.
Thanks, Brad. Questions from the group?
I just printed out, and this doesn't deal with the historic element, but the safety element, and this is from the National Association of City Transportation Officials and their Urban Street Design Guide. Curb extension visually and physically narrow the roadway, creating safer and shorter crossings for pedestrians while increasing the available space for street furniture, benches, plantings, and street trees. They may be implemented on downtown neighborhood and residential streets, large and small. Curb extensions increase the overall visibility of pedestrians by aligning them with the parking lane and reducing the crossing distance for pedestrians. So that talks about the safety. I tried to find, I went online and did a search for state guidelines on streetscapes and downtown historic districts. I could not find where Oklahoma had adopted one, but I found the one for the state historic preservation office or SHPO in Michigan. And in that one, when they talk about bumpouts, they say bumpouts have only been in use for the past several decades. Although bumpouts have no historic basis, they do improve pedestrian safety. If not carefully planned, these new elements can dramatically change the character of a historic district. They may be acceptable if their overall treatment is simple, only low plantings are used on trees, standard curb is used for the entire perimeter except for ADA compliant ramps, and decorative pavement is very limited. The reason I read that is it doesn't say no bumpouts. It just says that you have to be careful when you design them to make, make them fit the historic district. Same way, I, I found the one for Texas, and theirs, they call them corner extensions rather than bumpouts. Corner extensions, expansion of sidewalk into the parking lane at street corners, also known as bumpouts or aprons, are sometimes necessary when sidewalks are too narrow or have too high elevation for other solutions. And it goes on, talks about, but the thing that I found in both of those state guidelines, it's not saying absolutely no curb extensions or bumpouts, it just says that you have to be careful in the design of them so that you don't take away from the historic and architectural elements in the historic district. I don't know that this is a final answer, but if you look at option B, what we tried to do was concentrate on connecting the east and west side of downtowns with the curb extensions running east-west, but none going north-south, so that we protected the historic viewshed of Oklahoma and Harrison avenues, so that when you're on those streets, you don't even see the bumpouts. The other thing that we have added to this project is on Harrison and Oklahoma intersections at Division, we have added turn signals. They would be the permissive yellow flashing turn signals, so if you're setting at that light, you would get a protected turn. And then, once that's over, it would go to flashing, so if nobody's coming, you would be permissive to turn, which we think is something needed in those two intersections. And we've also added the drainage. There's no need to redo these intersection, not address the, the old drainage pipes in there, because then if we don't, eventually you'll have to tear them out. I, I realize that after we submit this to ODOT, whatever plan we submit, will go through an environmental review, and SHPO or the state historic preservation office will have an opportunity to review this. And of course, whatever their findings are would have an impact on the project or redesign. So it would be better, in my mind, if we could all work together and come up with a project that we could all support, and it would be easier for it to go through the environmental review if we could do that.
I've got a couple, two questions.
Yes.
First off, if we do nothing, what happens to the grant money?
The grant money would be returned, or we would give up the grant. That would not impact us. We visit with ODOT, and if we do that, that would not harm us as far as being eligible or consideration for future grants.
Okay, let me read.
But we can't just move it somewhere else.
Let me ask, we can't move it somewhere else?
Can't move it somewhere else.
The grant goes back.
Because it was a competitive grant and scored, and that particular project scored higher than the others. If you move it, that project may have not scored high enough to get funded, so they, they won't just let you move it to another location.
Well, that was kind of the reason that I voted for it in the first place, is because we had to give the money back if we didn't do it. But now, I'm hearing that we don't even have clearance to do it anyway. Okay, and, you know, this has been voted on. I've been looking at this before I was on council. I'm going on three years on council, okay? I've voted on this thing, and it's still on the table. I just kind of have a little bit of a problem with that.
Well, and this is a typical process, but once you turn your design concepts into ODOT, that's when they do the environmental review process. And, and that's typical of all federal. If you do a CDBG project, others, once you get the design or the design concept, then you go through the environmental process. So it happens after you're awarded the grant.
Yeah, I wasn't aware of that.
How much is grant for?
The grant is...
Six hundred and seventy thousand.
Six hundred seventy-eight thousand, four hundred and six dollars.
And then we use our other money from Munkford for the balance, is that right?
One hundred and sixty.
Yeah, one hundred and sixty. What, what I thought we would do, because that money from the Munkford was actually put into our stabilization fund, rather than go to the process and draw that out, we would use a lot some from our end-of-year balance from last year. Same amount of money, but not try to take it, pull it back out of the stabilization fund.
And this contains bringing both of those intersections up to ADA compliance?
If we do the drainage, which is not funded through the grant, so that would be 100% ours, which is 100 and 32,000. The balance of the architect, which is not grant-eligible, ever has been, and then the turn signals, 44,000. Then the project is a million-dollar project, 626,000 would come from the grant, and 377,000 from the city.
Okay, but I still go back to if we've already voted on this thing, why are we looking at other options? This has already been done a year ago.
One thing, when you voted before that resolution, you were specific in the amount of funding approved. The project is more with adding these things that are not funded. You have gone to a larger project. That wasn't included in the resolution that you did back in December 20, 2016.
So let me ask rest of council, do you remember us having to have other hoops that had to be jumped through on this project? Or when we voted on it, it was just going to happen? I was asking Jeff that question.
I thought we were going to jump through some other hoops, but maybe things have changed from the time I saw it. Has things changed where we would have lost something like that?
Well, the, the resolution that you adopted didn't, didn't set aside enough money to do the project. So at a minimum, you're going to have to amend that resolution to add the rest of the project.
So if we do nothing, the grant goes back for sure? We can't resubmit anything to them to do something different?
We can in future application rounds, but not this one.
And that's...
That money is just specifically used for the road.
Correct.
I was thinking if, if SHPO changes the design, then that will free up...
If SHPO changes the design, if we submit, that's a different scenario. If they submit it to SHPO and SHPO comes back and says, you know, it's acceptable us if you do this or do that, then it's possibility that we could do some other things in downtown. But if we just say no, we can't move the money. But if SHPO comes in and says they want us to do this different or that different, then there's more flexibility.
I guess that's the question I have, is the SHPO being involved, I was never aware of when we voted on this thing. It was a use it or lose it, huh?
We just, we just found that out.
Well, all federal programs...
Well, I would think that our engineering would have told us that.
I want to say, Brad, Brad, we, we learned that just a couple of weeks ago, right? When we were talking to ODOT?
You there, Brad?
That was part of the portion of the funding mechanism of a federal-funded project, yeah, ODOT's, you know, process of submitting it to SHPO and getting the, you know, the comments back and how it could affect the project in terms of, you know, they would be able to move things around if SHPO comments on it, rather than if we change it altogether, was what we learned. But yeah, doing a section 108 review of the project with federal funding was always part of, of one of these projects.
And that's no different if you get a federal grant to do a trail project. You have, once you get it funded, you have to do an environmental review process. Any federal project is going to go through an environmental review process.
All three of our, our three of the ACOC projects that we recently got the resolution for will be done similar to the same way as well.
So that would not be unique for your architect or engineer to remind you of that, because they probably think if you do enough federal grants, you know that.
That's just the standard part of the procedure. Well, that's why I was asking this table if anybody knew the past councils.
I assume that ODOT was interested in the, in the pedestrian safety, and that generated significant points. When we, when we reduce that by approximately 50%, by only going east and west, does that put in jeopardy this, this review process? When you've been, when you've been having discussion with ODOT?
ODOT was a little reluctant, but when we started talking about the tourism industry and how important it is to us, and how that ties in to our historic downtown with the history and unique architect's features, the movie industry here, it changed their mind a little bit when we reminded all those things, and, and they were receptive, and they are supportive of option B because they feel that it does more than protect that historic use.
Okay, so that doesn't, that doesn't hurt our submission, if you will, or a continuation.
That's why we had a conference call.
I love the, I love the turn signal aspect. I think that's a huge thing. The ADA aspect, I think, is a positive. We're going to have to replace those, those, those pipes, those sewer lines in there at some point in time anyway. And I love the opportunity to, to link up with future plans that we've got going further on on the east side. That alley going that way as opposed to the alley on the west side of Vision. I think those are all really, really positive things about this, about this option.
How much, how much do we think those turn signals are?
Forty thousand, wasn't it?
Forty-four thousand, six, seventy.
Oklahoma and Harrison, so it would be twenty...
Twenty-seven, twenty-two, twenty-two, three.
Brad?
With the lights fixed.
That redoes all the lights, right?
Puts the turn signals in and rewarm. Brad?
How much is it going to be to do?
I've got a question for you. The controls you're going to use on these traffic signals, are they camera or are they loops?
You'd have to ask Bill on that. He should be in the room.
Or stable loops.
Is there a reason we're staying with loops?
The, the company that we use that addresses 90% of our signal light stuff highly recommends the loops over the, the camera systems due to just experiences that they've had with them in, in previous towns that they've, they've put them in.
They have them in Oklahoma City.
Does the plan to interlock the Harrison, Oklahoma, and, and Noble traffic signals all together to relieve the traffic pressure that we have every single night?
It should assist.
I know that Noble's not included in this, so we've got, we're going to have to replace those interlocks, the, the interconnects are going to have to be replaced and/or updated to where they all, you know, they all work together, and possibly even at Broad.
Right, it will assist with that. But will it can fix every bit of our congestion problem, probably not?
Well, no, we're not adding any lanes or anything like that, but as long, as long it can, as it can be timed. I've seen a car backed up all the way to go to this liquor store from Harrison, and you have too, so somebody in the...
There probably been those traffic jam.
But if we can, if we can get that to where it times out properly, which would include the side streets that it have to, then, then we relieve a whole part. That's what, that's what I like about this entire project. That's the biggest thing I like about this project.
Those aren't using the loop currently, are they, those two transitions?
No, no.
It's awful on timer.
No, they're, they're, yeah, they're not on a loop. There are, I think the one at, at Broad might be, or something like that, but...
No, all, every, every signal we have operates off of loop, loops except for two directions at Harrison and Oklahoma. Those two, I believe it's your, your north-south traffic does not operate off of loops, but your east-west traffic operates off of loops on them intersections.
Doesn't it force it to time?
Yes, we do have a constant...
What does a loop do? I'm stupid to the loop deal.
It sends the signal to the control as a car pulls up onto the loop.
Wait, wait.
Magnetic signals to the controller, lets them know that there's a car there, and then like it's, once that signal's sent, it, it, like there are three minutes, it will change that light. If that loop, you have a chance loop and you have a loop that's right up on your stop block. If either one of them loops are broke, which we do have that problem in this town, and it is due to the road surface, its surface itself, if you've noticed one that is probably every month in front of Cash Saver, the surface is very, very poor. And it's just the copper wire that they saw and lay that loop in, and we, we've approached ODOT several times in this, and this would fix that surface to where those loops would be in a concrete, possibly surface, much better, much more secure, less opportunity of the movement in asphalt.
So it improves your loop system on those existing lights, Harrison.
We did have in there upgrading the controllers at both intersections, and we had also doing loops, and we had doing the port signal that's two heads at each.
But we were overbuck on the whole project, so they had to come back to this Plan B thing anyway, right? Is what I'm hearing here. That's the reason we're looking at Plan B, because we didn't have enough money to do Plan A.
Plan B does save us on the grant end because you're putting...
Is that right?
Yeah, I mean, as far as cost, I mean, in your package, you have the, what you were looking at, the total.
Sure.
So I think what we were talking about, there was a certain amount of local participation that we had to do, had to do the 20% match.
Can we minimize the sidebars, please? Go ahead, Bill.
Oh, okay. So that's what this is showing here, that basically, I think overall, your local match was like 450,000. You've already spent 77, something like that. So you set another 370-ish, if you move forward in the project, that's what we wanted to talk about in your packet, was that point there.
But moving from A to B did save, because you're not doing as many curb extensions, so it did reduce the amount, so the grant portion is within the grant budget. But you've always had these additional add-ons, but if the grant portion got back within the grant budget.
Good. So does this, are they adding the loops on Harrison and Oklahoma?
Yes.
Okay. That should help a lot.
I see five positives coming out of it. Jeff?
Question, Brad, does the grant have to get the approval of the National Park Service since it's part of the historic district, the landmark district?
To my knowledge, the, the state historic preservation office would be, you know, coordinating any abilities or, or needs for that. I mean, through their review process, they're going to go through a, you know, historic, you know, date of precedence and do the, the entire review, and that is based on a federal, you know, guideline of federal-funded projects, so.
I agree with you, but I'm, I'm asking, does there have to be another approval down in Washington DC? And how long does it take?
This, this would be the process for approval for this construction project. I mean, this would be the, the same throughout, you know, the state on each one of these projects. If you're asking on a specific, you know, uniqueness to, you know, downtown Guthrie, the State Historic Preservation Office would be, would coordinate that and make that happen. It wouldn't be a separate review. It would all happen within their precedence or their, their review process.
So the answer to the question would be no, no, would be yes on the state side.
He's saying the state handles everything. You do not have to do the federal approval.
The state may involve the federal as part of their review.
Right.
The state may involve the federal as part of their review process.
Does anybody else hear no of the answer? Okay, we'll go next question. Assuming the bump out, option C, assuming there was no bump outs, what cost savings do you, would that be as to your project? Like 50,000 each bump out or I don't know how it's calculated. And Councilman Brian, we were having a discussion, what could we legally use that money for if we had no bump outs? Could we use it for brick sidewalks, improving more ADA issues? For example, I know over around the American Legion area, is that at a block or two off Division? Could we use that money there in opposed to the bump outs?
We probably could not move the money off of Division because that is an ODOT road and that is why it was, you know, applied for on this, on this location. In terms of saving money or, or taking the bump outs out, you know, I, I could not, you know, 50,000 a bump out, 20,000, 30, probably around that, you know, 20, 30 to 40,000 dollars of, you know, a corner or a bump out. You know, it, you know, it reduces what the project, you know, turns out to be in, in terms of pedestrian enhancement and pedestrian, you know, safety. And I think it would turn into, you know, where we get into the issue with ODOT, you know, applying for the grant or, or changing the submission enough to where it didn't represent the, the intent of the original grant and we wouldn't be scoring as high as we did to, to win the grant. They would potentially have some issues with that.
I would think that the bump outs again are the primary scoring, the thing that's driving the scoring on, on all of this.
Correct.
But that's not my question. My question is, assuming ODOT did approve it, could the money, without losing the money for our grant, if it's free money, could it be used for park benches or other items other than the bump out?
Even if it was on Division?
Even if it was on Division.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, assuming that they didn't have any issues with the scoring yet, I mean, it could be used. They would need to retain on Division because that's where the improvements are, are required to be.
Okay, thank you.
It's either Division or connecting to, to Division with the alleyway concept.
How much risk does that put us if we take the bump outs out of the package altogether in your, in your estimation?
I would think pretty high risk.
I would think so too. Can we find that out ahead of time?
Well, I wouldn't be in support of.
We had some discussions, we were like, do you want to fill it? I mean, it's kind of this discussion of where we work to get to these options, A, B, and, you know, if C was not considered because of that.
And when we, when you're saying the approval of ODOT and the mayor's talking about ODOT, we're also talking about the State Historical Society, are we not? Don't they work together on this, on the approval?
Correct. I mean, ODOT and, and ACOG to a division is, is running the grant process. They will work in, in coordination with SHPO during the review, correct?
Yes, thank you.
The, the impression I got in the conversation, because we had to lean on pretty heavy to get them to accept option B and get them to understand historic use set. I don't think they're going to take a package that has no bump outs. But if we have bump outs and it goes to SHPO and SHPO comes back and recommends no bump outs, then I think they would consider a project without bump outs.
I don't see why you want to go to the trouble. If citizens of Guthrie, including the 50 people that signed the petition, 90% of the downtown owners don't want the bump outs. It would appear that maybe we could work together and try to devise a plan that did not include the bump outs if we could get assurances ahead of time that maybe SHPO would agree to it with ODOT since we are such a unique historic area. That's what, that's where we're coming from.
So I have a question. Does he have a record, does Kim have a record of when they met with the stakeholders in town to hear what the people wanted? Is there a record of that?
Are you asking Brad that question?
Uh, Brad?
I think that's, wasn't that before him? That before his time?
No, he was, he was, he applied for the grant and he got the.
Did you hear that question, Brad?
Yeah, can you repeat it?
Yes, so you applied for the grant at the request of Serena Freeland?
Um, yeah, I guess, yeah, at that time.
Okay, and then you were awarded the design plan based on Kim? Who else?
Yeah.
The staff gave, gave you the, the, the design plan, but when did you meet with the people, the stakeholders?
The downtown improvement committee?
Well, anybody, anybody. When did you, are there dates, dates that when that was done?
So we had a, a, a three-day design charrette in, I guess, the room that y'all are in right now. I guess that was almost two years ago, two and a half years ago. Where there was an open house, public meetings, public comment, the downtown committee and I believe two meetings over that three-day period. And then we had individual, we had an open design charrette where people came in, talked about their, their ideas. I have another whole presentation that we went through last year. I was trying to summarize tonight, but we could go over that if you, if you'd like. But there was, there was quite a bit of involvement that weekend on, on, you know, the desires and the needs for this, this project. Since then, I've probably been involved in about five to 10 meetings with different individuals or different organizations, I guess, in, in town. So I, I, I think that answers your question, but I don't know.
Well, it doesn't because nobody, nobody downtown knew anything about it, that's all.
Well, I don't know if that's true.
Well, I've talked about it.
Oh, I don't think that's true.
I don't know anybody.
Nobody knew.
Not very many people I know there.
That's different than nobody.
Is there documentation?
Well, not nobody.
Well, okay, is there documentation of who was invited, how they were invited, when the input? If he's saying he's talked to several people, because I guess the people, if, it's in his best interest to start and let, find out what the people want so you won't have hundreds of people against you, I'm thinking.
And then a year ago, we had an open meeting, a workshop, and no one came.
Well, you gotta, you gotta put it in your utility bill or you gotta post flyers.
You meet the person Thursday.
Didn't you have one city council, I mean, city mayor, you had one that passed it. You had one or two that were against it and then Leroy, I mean, wasn't it, hadn't it flip-flopped to the last fruitful year anyway?
I don't think so.
Well, then why have we taken three years to get here?
That's a good question.
I know.
It's flip-flopped.
Well, that's what I'm talking about. That's why I got a problem with this whole thing right at this point. Because we already agreed on this, good, bad, indifferent. I didn't see a list of people that didn't want it and I voted on it, okay? And so now here we are, not doing it and we're going over some other scenario because the monies that we have allocated to it, Mr. Mayor, aren't enough. That's the only reason we're doing it. And so I got a problem with that. What did we vote? It's kind of like, it, it feels like a, a pig in a poke type thing to me. Okay, is what it feels like.
Money's not the only thing. We, we come up with option B with the concept of protecting the historic use set of Oklahoma and Harrison.
And, and the flip-flop of the alley and, and the turn signal. Turn signals weren't in our original.
Turn signals weren't in the original deal.
Those are, those are positive things in my book.
All right, so let me ask you this, Brad. Have we got SHPO and everybody else involved in this to find out what their view is at this point on option A?
So we, we've talked at ODOT as the anticipation of submitting for, for that review and they recommended and, and to Leroy's guidance, we wanted to bring this to you to let you all know what we would be submitting for that, so that's kind of where we're at. The next step would be to submit this package to SHPO and to, to ODOT for an official, you know, review and, and assignment.
And does that meet the original timeframe that we were all under the impression of? Because it seems like we voted on this a year and a half ago. Maybe I'm wrong, but it seems like this has been on the table now for 16, 18 months.
We voted on the resolution last year.
Almost, almost a year to date.
So a year ago, so.
Nineteen. And, and I, and I can't answer that question other than kind of the, you know, where, where the, you know, focus was on this project to either, you know, move it forward or, or hold off the review for historic preservation within the city. So we've been working with Leroy after he got hired, which was, I believe that, that week or the week before that meeting, so I think there was some onboarding or timeframe there that they got, that has this, you know, where we are today.
So, so the drainage improvements are 132,000, right, on this deal?
Yeah.
Did?
132, 16, 132.
Okay, and then the lights are 40 grand?
Forty-four.
So we're basically the Monford money to fix our drainage and put new lights on Division without any of this project, right? That's what I'm thinking that my opinion is that we do scrap it.
So would you ask, could we ask Brad?
Well, this has been going on for a year and a half and you said Thursday, no.
Would Brad?
Okay, but you know, this has already been voted on and this hasn't even broke ground. Hasn't even gone to the authorities to get approval.
The Low Water Dam took forever as well.
It shouldn't have. That was the reason by our past city management why that took so long.
Yeah.
Yeah. So.
Well, Leroy, you and I have talked to, somebody asked about SHPO. You and I have talked to some people very involved in the development of Guthrie, i.e. Susan Guthrie Dunham, who, some of us old timers. Cheryl, pardon me.
Thank you very much.
No, people that were around back then, some of the youngsters wouldn't know who that is, but she is the one that did the whole thing, fit it all together. And she has, she's been notified of this issue and she happens to have known Leroy a long time ago and has faith in his judgment 99% of the time. But I think she's a very interesting person to get her view of this. She's talked to Bob Blackburn, people, Mel Beena doesn't work at SHPO anymore. Leroy, do you know who the new person is?
Their architect retired too. I don't know the players down there anymore.
And she, and Barrett Williamson, who's also a renowned architect that did the territorial jail re-edit for nothing. He is on the National Trust Advisory Board. He's familiar with this project as of the last two or three weeks. I think there's those type of people that have great knowledge of the historical aspect of this. And we're not talking about lights, period lighting is a good idea. I'm not, we're not saying the whole project's bad, but little parts of it are bad.
What parts?
The bump outs, period. All the bump outs.
It's not going to happen.
All the bump outs. It ain't going to go. It ain't going to get funded.
It's a safety advancement.
It's just not going to get funded.
It will get.
It will get funded.
That's what, Steve, that's what we're saying.
That's what we're saying.
Would Brad meet with the public?
Yeah.
And he's skilled at understanding what the public says and we can make improvements.
Listen, you guys submitted a listing of people that were against this project.
Now, they just submit a list, they've signed it.
I understand. And I also know that, that a number of those people were revisited a couple of weeks after and said, they didn't know what they were signing.
How about Janet?
And people said, and other people said they were against it because of the trees and the birds, not the bump outs.
Why do you object to having a big meeting and let, here, and listen to, listen to what people say, all, all we're saying?
We've had open meetings, Carol, and the opportunity has been there.
I understand that you're against having the public tell you.
I am not. Don't put those words in my mouth. Don't.
Well, then, what, when do we do that?
We must have a meeting. We've had, we've had open meetings and the public has not, has not participated. There've been participation. We got pictures of people in this very, in this very room.
You weren't even on council when this started. You weren't even on council when this started.
I wasn't.
Okay.
You're right. I wasn't.
That's when we're saying, when were, when were the public meetings before you were on council? And what no one can come up with.
I would suggest this project's drawn out for quite some time. We're all aware of that. Part of it is you change city managers after you adopted the resolution. I had more than this project to get caught up on when I came here in February, so it's taken some time. But I don't think another 30 or 45 days to make a decision is going to adversely affect the project. I would not be objectionable. Susan Guthrie is how I know her.
That's how I know her too.
And.
She knows what she's talking about.
If, if she's available in January and she was also going to see if maybe we could get some of the staff from the State Historic Preservation Office to come to a meeting. If we give them an opportunity, I don't necessarily want to have a big public meeting, but if we had representatives at that meeting from the local group and let them have input, then it could come back to city council sometime in February to make a decision.
It would be agreeable. By the way, I'm the Logan County Straw Society. I didn't, I don't know who she is. I'm the Logan County Straw Society, so I'm speaking on their behalf, not this dumb individual.
My only comment, let me comment just one comment, is there's been 35, 40-year effort around here to keep, preserve the intent of historical integrity of the downtown, historical society. Excuse me, downtown historical aspect. And we want to turn it into every town in the US that I don't, I don't get. It just doesn't seem to fit at all, the concept of the downtown with the bump outs and turning this into whatever other town in America looks like.
Is that the reason that you're against the bump outs?
Yes, that's, that's, that's basically my concern.
You're, you're against it for, because of four bump outs?
Well, that's going to, how can you change the whole streetscape and then tell somebody what kind of sign they can put up? Or what kind, what kind of they can pass a bill with?
I asked you a question. You're against it because of four bump outs?
It, well, yes. Yeah. Well, I don't like the trees.
Oh, I got one last question. How about the HP?
Anything that changes the streetscape.
HP Committee, has it reviewed and approved the bump outs? HP Committee is responsible for any historic changes of the downtown landscape area.
Well, this predated all but two of the people here in the council and, and Kim. Maybe you can answer that. I don't want to put you on the spot. Did it go to Historic Preservation before it came?
May 4th, 2015, they, there was a discussion about the, this, this project.
And there was no vote.
And it was a discussion and Ed, I believe you were on the committee at that time.
Chair of that committee, I believe.
Yeah.
And we need to discuss it.
Yeah, there was discussion and.
But that's all there was. It was basically, it was basically a presentation of what we had tonight. And we really didn't get into it, talk about it. It was going to be brought back for us to talk about and at that point it just kind of went dark, so. I just feel like, you know, we wasted tremendous amount of time. My time's valuable. I know y'all's is valuable, okay? We've already made a decision on multiple issues, Jason, that you weren't even involved in. And now we're having to spend time and make the decision over. You know, continually this happens. That's got to quit. Have we, all right, so in February are we going to make a decision in, in December and change that? You know, that's, that's what my, that's where my frustration comes from.
The workshop we had last year is, you called it. You, you asked for that workshop.
Exactly. And, but we've already made a decision here, okay? And now we're going to remake it, just like on the Low Water Dam. Made a decision, had to remake it. It's continual. It's ridiculous.
The changes gets it within the amount that the grant. The changes gets it within the amount that the grant...
That's the frustration.
It also adds...
It's not about the bump outs. It's about the whole process of multiple...
Okay, so we're moving this then to approximately thirty days.
That's why we're paying a dollar a year.
They would say, if you're all agreeable, that representatives from the historic community want, give me a list of people, and Susan, we will meet in January.
Chair said you would.
And then we will bring it back to city council in February.
Okay, all right. We've got eight minutes to talk a little bit about the multipurpose Trail Master Plan staff. Brad, I guess you're off the hook.
Good day, you all have a good evening.
You, too.
Bye.
Thanks.
Chris.
Thank you.
Does Aaron have this, where he could bring up the Trail Master Plan? There, OTRD, which is the Oklahoma Tourism Recreation Department, has a grant opportunity. The grant deadline is the last business day in January. And you can apply for two hundred, forty thousand dollars in grant. You match that with sixty thousand, and you can do a three hundred thousand dollar trail project. And you can submit more than one application, but three hundred thousand is the most you're going to get. The, we'll have to have a public hearing in January if we move forward with that. Myers Engineering did a master plan of trails, and let me go get my yardstick. I won't get anybody with this.
I don't know, where's the, where's the trail?
It's the whole city.
Oh, this is...
This is a whole, it's a master plan for the whole city. Top right is Highland Park, elbows over on the left middle. And it's connecting, it's connecting all of, all of those...
As we do future parks...
Middle right is the proposed sports complex.
As we do future parks, we want to do trails in them when we'll tie them all together. So as indicated, this is the temple, this is Oklahoma. So we start on this end. You know, the Guthrie Collaborative is trying to work on trails over in the elbow area. And what we could do there is, we come down Oklahoma, there's a railroad crossing here, go to Fifth Street, go up to Fifth Street, and then south of the bridge, there's a large right-of-way. ODOT has indicated we could get agreement with them to put a trail in that right-of-way. We would go to Ninth Street. This is not the main channel of Cottonwood Creek anymore. It's a meandering scar. The mainstream is right here, so you can't really cross here because you're fighting too much water. If you come here at the Ninth Street and cross, that is limited water you got to deal with because it's not the main channel anymore. Then what we could do is follow the road network that is in the elbow area to set up a series of trails. And then the old park pavilion could be redone. It's still standing and reasonably, reasonably good shape. Put some historic landmarks up.
Beautiful shape.
Beautiful, yeah. I was over there about two months ago.
Then we would go under the bridge in the Cottonwood Flats area and come and tie into our new banner park that we're developing, and there's trails in there. Then we would come down to tie into, and this one doesn't have mineral wells on it, this version, but the latest version does. We come down and tie into Mineral Wells Park in this area. We are in line in the future to get another tap grant to do a sidewalk from downtown to Walmart. And we want to tie, if we do, when we do the sports complex, we'll tie it in together. We would go out Oklahoma and have a shared bicycle lane, and these would be shared, where we build new trails, they'd be wide enough so you could have bicycle and walking. Now, where we have to deal with existing streets, you might have a shared bicycle lane or bicycle traffic lane. But then we would come out to the temple and go over and tie into Highland Park. So we're trying to come up with a network of trails that you could ride a bike or walk pretty much anywhere. We're also looking at, if we can put a system of trails together like this, where you could have a 5K run and not have to cross major streets, then it would reduce our amount of overtime for police officers when we have 5K runs to monitor street crossings because you would no longer be crossing streets. What we want tonight is, this is a concept and it's fluid and be developed over time, but we have an action item on our city council later for you all to give us a green light to start the process to maybe apply for one of these grants that are due in January to do a segment of the trail. And then over time, each year, we look at applying for another grant so that eventually we would have this trail system. This is a, you know, ten, twelve-year project to do all this, but we want a master plan, so when we get done, they all tie together.
Great idea.
What do you, which one do you think is the priority?
We, we were thinking maybe we would put together something on the elbow trail project, and then we would pick another, and OTRD said if we would get with them, they would give us advice on which one they think would score the highest. And that's the one we would probably submit is which one they recommend that they thought would score highest in the competitive grant round.
I'd like to see something coming from Highland down to the proposed sports complex, too, straight down. Is that capital?
That would be capital, right?
Yeah, but I mean, obviously, obviously, this can mature.
Sure.
As we move along. I think it's a great, great idea, great starting point.
And I will point out that our engineering, for Myers Engineering, did this master plan at no cost.
Is the city, let me ask a question. Is the city on all the property where the trail will be in the elbow?
It's old street right of way.
Good. It is owned by the city.
Yes.
Because I'm on a committee, I'm on a committee that, we're trying to get some approval of the people that are close to that, to either deed their property over or get easements so we can expand the trail.
We don't own, the city owns quite a bit of the property, but we don't own it all. But we do still control the street right-of-ways, the old street right-of-ways. I presented this to the Guthrie Collaborative, and they endorsed this concept.
It's a great idea.
It's a great idea.
Ladies and gentlemen, we are out of time. We need to go downstairs.